Good evening. I call the meeting, the May 9 meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll start with the invocation by Reverend Ken and Frederick Walker of St. James Episcopal Church. And I'll ask City Council to stand. Anybody else in the audience that wants to stand, please do so. And then after the invocation, I'll ask Councilman Bill Mooney to lead it, well, lead us in the pledge allegiance. Thank you.
I want you all to listen to a reading from Second Chronicles, Chapter 1, Verses 7 through 14. "Go appear to Solomon and say to him, 'Ask for whatever you won't mean to give you.'" Solomon answered God, "You have shown great kindness to David my father and have made me king in his place. Now, Lord God, let your promise to my father David be confirmed; for you have made me king over a people who are as numerous as the dust of the earth. Give me wisdom and knowledge, that I may lead this people, for who is able to govern this great people of yours." God said to Solomon, "Since this is your heart's desire, you have not asked for wealth, possessions, or honor, nor for the death of your enemies; and since you have not asked for a long life, but for wisdom and knowledge to govern my people over whom I have made you king, therefore wisdom and knowledge will be given to you. And I will give you your wealth, possessions, and honor, such as no king who was before you have ever had, none after you." Then Solomon went to Jerusalem, from the high place of Gibeon, from before the ten of Midori, and he reigned over Ezra. Shall we bow our heads? God, we thank you for this city of Portsmouth. We thank you, O Father, for the mayor and his council that govern these people. Endow them with your blessing and wisdom, as to lead, O God, this city. We thank you for the citizenry of this city, as they come to deliberate, O God, in the interests of this city, that civility, calm, peace, and understanding will prevail in their meetings. This we pray you through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To the members of City Council, please indicate your presence by voting yes electronically. And Madam Clerk, we have everyone present.
Yes, sir.
The next item of business, approval of minutes, the minutes of a call meeting, April 24, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting, April 25, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting of April 25, 2017. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move adoption.
We have a motion to approve these three sets of minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will see, notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep. We ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the form and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This brings us to item 17-201, which is a public hearing on a code amendment to our zoning ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Mayor, for this particular one, because it's a public hearing, there isn't a caption. I can read what's on the agenda.
Would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. CA 0117, Uptown. The city of Portsmouth is proposing amendments to the zoning ordinance D2 Form-Based Code provisions in the Uptown area of the city that would allow deviations and permitted nonconforming uses, site and building design standards, and other requirements of the D2 FBC through the use permit process.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would it be appropriate to get a motion to put this on the table?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'll call on Dr. Patton to describe what we're amending.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, on February 3rd and 4th, 2017, City Council hosted a retreat, thereby identifying strategic priorities, the big four things, of which revise, revoke, Form-Based Code is second at the top of the list. On February 16, 2017, a joint meeting was held with the City Council and the Planning Commission to discuss the strategic approach that will be realized to achieve the goal to revise, revoke, Form-Based Code. Tonight is the first major step through the public hearing to move this matter forward. Mr. Bob Baldwin, Planning Director, will come forward to provide further explanation of the process. Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor, Chair, and members of City Council. Again, following up on the comments from Dr. Patton, this code amendment, which we commonly refer to as the D2 Form-Based Code District Patch, is now before you for a public hearing. Get this work here. Okay. Very, very briefly, and I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, we'll walk through this. What you can see on the visual there tonight, that is the downtown zoning map, and the area that's in pink is the D2 Form-Based Code area, basically running from Effingham on the east to the Martin Luther King Extension on the west, and generally from county to the, to the south to London Boulevard to the north. And so that is the area that will be affected by the proposed code amendment you have before you. Now, in discussing the Form-Based Code, we had indicated before, there were some issues in the way that code was adopted. It created a number of these problems we're having from nonconforming uses and things that City Council might want to be allowed. And I'll show you another graphic here. And this graphic, just to show you, give you an idea of what really is causing a lot of the problems, this would have been what the zoning map would have looked like prior to 2010. And that's the old D2 district with its sub-districts. And those sub-districts, as noted at the bottom of that slide there, shows they're residential, commercial, industrial, public, and mixed use. And you notice there's a predominance of that purple color in there. That's light industrial, and that's where you're having a lot of issues, because the Form-Based Code was basically doing something contrary to what the prevailing land use zoning and planning and development had been prior to 2010. So in essence, you know, by moving to something that didn't recognize the zoning that had been in place prior to 2010, you ended up with a lot of zoning issues. So what we have, again, before you tonight are the number of the Form-Based Code issues that we're trying to address with this patch. Number one, as I just mentioned, the Form-Based Code created a lot of nonconforming uses, a lot of nonconforming buildings, and overall nonconforming sites. And since the number of those buildings have been sitting over, over time, they've lost their nonconforming status. And then as a result, when they come in to get permits, try to use the buildings, they run up against the Form-Based Code and are told you have to redevelop in accordance with the Form-Based Code. Of course, that's, can be quite a hardship. The Form-Based Code also set prescriptive design standards. It's a design district, it's very heavy in design requirements, and in many cases, those design requirements don't fit the pattern of buildings that are in place, don't always fit buildings that might be around you, may not fit the block pattern. So we also tend to run into a problem with people who can't design a project that'll, that complies. And then finally, and we've had this conversation before, we had a Type 2 Site Plan process that really permeates the entire zoning ordinance. It was intended to go through the Planning Commission to allow some flexibility to adjust some of these design issues during a site plan process. That process is no longer allowed based on a Supreme Court decision that said the Planning Commission does not have authority to take that kind of action. They're a recommending body, they are not a decision-making body, they cannot modify all your standards. We lost the Type 2 process. And in essence, that's just created this whole myriad of problems we have with the, with the Form-Based Code. So what we've done, and what's before you tonight in this code amendment, are basically these, what's in these three bullets here. Number one, we're going to create opportunities of uses that would have been permitted in the pre-2010 zoning ordinance, using the UR, GMU, and IL districts that are in our current zoning code. Those districts, with their uses, match up almost exactly to what was in the prior to 2010 downtown zoning. So we're linking into our zoning ordinance. If people come in for the types of uses they want to do, we look through that table. These are all, as was mentioned too, these all require use permit applications to come before City Council. In addition, the amendment would potentially allow nonconforming uses and structures to continue, to be altered, to be reestablished. That's another that's precluded by the current Form-Based Code. So moving from one nonconforming use to another, for example, today is prohibited, even though it might make total sense in terms of the buildings and structures. So that would allow, again, without going through a rezoning, someone to request a use permit from City Council to do that. And then the last thing, back to this issue where we lost the Type 2 Site Plan, this creates a process for City Council to consider deviations from the design standards of the Form-Based Code. You'll see one of those next month for the Wendy's on London Boulevard. But in essence, this would allow City Council to take a look at making modifications to projects that are trying to be built but don't fully comply. And this, this, just one last piece of background, we tried doing this through the Board of Zoning Appeals, it just did not work. This did not rise to the level of, of a, of a situation where a zoning variance is in order. This is basically a flaw in the zoning code, and as the Board of Zoning Appeals would note, to fix is to go back and amend the code. So that's, again, why this is before you tonight. So bottom line context for the amendments, this would create a temporary zoning approach, which will ultimately be repealed. I use this phrase, repealed and replaced. When the D2 Form-Based Code land use plan is developed and adopted, as you know, we are going to be coming back with a land use plan for the D2 district and get Council's approval of that. And then that will lead us to work through actually replacing this with a formal, final type of zoning. So this is, as a patch, it's temporary. Again, this allows, retains the opportunity for, and the option for property. They could use the D2 Form-Based Code as it exists, that doesn't go away with this patch. If somebody actually likes the D2 Form-Based Code and wants to develop a project using that, they can. However, if they want these modifications, the use permit option becomes available. We believe this creates a sound approach for dealing with all these issues related to nonconforming uses and structures. Again, looking back on that map, I was showing you that property in purple, there's more than you should have nonconforming issues within this district. And so we needed a much more broad approach to deal with these, and this process would do that. And then finally, it authorized City Council to approve the design modifications I mentioned before. So that's really the four big things that are incorporated within this code amendment. We've tried to keep it as relatively simple and straightforward. And again, the ultimate plan within the process of revising the city's entire zoning ordinance is to replace this D2 Form-Based Code with a replacement zoning ordinance and a replacement zoning approach for this area. And with that, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Before we start the public hearing, does any member of council have any questions? Mr. Mooney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to salute Mr. Baldwin and staff, City Manager, for correcting what has been the, really, the one negative that most of us hear from people that want to do business in Portsmouth, want to build in Portsmouth, has been the Form-Based Code. Real glad to see that it's going to be corrected. And as you mentioned with the Wendy's, there have been other businesses through growth and other needs that wanted to move to other areas of the city that Form-Based Code has, in some cases, prevented them from doing that. So hopefully, the word will get out far and wide that we've corrected something that ended up being an obstacle through, I guess, some unintended consequences. But at least we can look forward now and get beyond this obstacle. Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin. The Planning Commission has considered this and is recommending-
Um, yes, I should, should have mentioned, the Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this at their meeting in April and voted unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you, sir. Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing, and we do have one registered speaker, Lisa Murphy. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Lisa Murphy. I'm the local attorney with an office at 999 Waterside Dryness Drive in the city of Norfolk. And I too wanted to commend council and staff. I represent, as some of you know, the Wendy's, who will be coming before you next month. But I'm also a member of the Local Affairs Committee of the Hampton Roads Association for Commercial Real Estate. And as a committee, we've also been following this. And I want to confirm that these changes are really going to help foster economic development. I know it's somewhat rare that you hear from supporters, you usually hear from the naysayers, but that this is something that will be good and help foster economic development and commercial real estate. So we, we support it, and we look forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter? This is a public hearing on an amendment to our zoning ordinance. Does anybody else want to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I declare this public hearing closed. And we do have a motion on the floor, and this is the first reading. And any discussion on council? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Ladies and gentlemen, this brings us to the City Manager's Report, item 17-202, which are 15 items, ordinances, and resolution that pertain to the adoption of the city's operating budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption that precedes all these ordinances? And we'll take these ordinances one at a time.
Yes, sir. Adoption of ordinances and resolutions to appropriate the total sum of $673,855,090 for the operation of city government for fiscal year 2018 for the following areas. City operating budget, $431,386,588. Capital Improvement Fund, $43,378,713. Public Utilities Capital Improvement Fund, $6,104,000. Portsmouth Public Schools Operating Budget, $192,985,789.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And this brings us to the first of the 15 resolutions, our ordinances, and that's item 17-202A. Will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reenact ordinance number 2016-31 to impose and levy taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018, on real estate, tangible personal property, privately-owned pleasure boats, privately-owned camping trailers and motorhomes, and machinery and tools within the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, for the purpose of raising revenue for the support of governmental operations and the public free schools, and to pay principal and interest on public debt.
You've heard the caption read of the ordinance. To get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt, and it's duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Madam Clerk, this brings us to item B. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to establish regular increases in rates for water and sewage services as authorized by Sections 38-83 and 38-117 of said code.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the reading of the caption of the ordinance. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Madam Clerk, this brings us to 17-202C. And would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to decrease the monthly service charge for the collection and disposal of trash and garbage as authorized by Section 16-64 of said code.
And ladies and gentlemen, we do have one registered speaker, and that's Mark Godolgi Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. It grieves me to speak against something that I have been looking forward to for quite some time. With the beginning of a new contract with the Southeastern Public Service Authority that, that begins in the middle of January 2018, we were anticipating that the tipping fee for our solid waste that's delivered to SIPSA was going to take a dramatic downward turn. But some recent developments, which you've probably been following, indicate that this may not come to pass. The buildup of leachate in two cells of the current landfill in Suffolk, and the delay of the repower construction project that was to build the factory, the industrial facility, for handling much of the waste from our neighboring cities and ourself, casts a great shadow over the prospects for a lower tipping fee. The last Wednesday in April, the SIPSA board met and approved a $3 million budget for mitigation of the leachate buildup in Suffolk. And that entails daily transport of some 200,000 gallons of leachate by truck to four different HRSD facilities within the region, as well as the ongoing piping of 50,000 gallons a day of leachate to the Suffolk facility. The proposed remediation plan runs for 150 days with an option to renew if the leachate level has not reached the mandated level within that 150-day timeframe. So with $3 million already committed, and the possibility of more to be spent if that doesn't do the trick, we have a question as well that affects us directly. Portsmouth has no transfer station. The end of our relationship with Wheelabrader in January of next year under the new SIPSA contract means that we need a place to move trash collected in the neighborhoods to long-haul trucks that will carry it to the landfill in Suffolk or to the repower plant in Chesapeake. We have no landfill. The money that SIPSA had offered us, the $6 million for the development of a landfill for Portsmouth, is being eaten up by this mitigation process. So we will need to be in a position to finance a transfer station when we decide where it's going to be. I believe because of these unforeseen occurrences and things that were beyond Portsmouth's ability to, to influence, we should not make any reduction at this time in the waste disposal charges. So I would ask you to reject item C this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, Dr. Patton, could you expound on that issue-
You can sit down.
-that was just raised as far as the uncertainty surrounding the leachate issue, and also the SIPSA contract, the justification for decreasing the fees?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, we have taken all of what currently is before us as it relates to SIPSA in consideration, and feel very confident in presenting you, to you, the reduction in this fee. In addition, we're working with SIPSA, as we provided to you a report from our appointee in our last brief, and where the manner is with SIPSA dealing with the leachate situation. I feel very confident what we presented to you all tonight in regard to this fee holds firm and puts us in a good position going forward.
Will, will each of the cities have a responsibility for the leachate issue?
There has been no decision made on that and brought forward, Dr. Whitaker. It is still in SIPSA's preview, purview, and determining, as indicated, exactly what the issues are and how they will be eradicated.
If it is determined that that cost will be charged across each city, will that impact on our fees to citizens?
We are not looking at this time to raise fees for citizens. We're confident where we are right now.
Right. I understand it. My question is, if it is determined by SIPSA that this significant leachate cost is going to be spread, allocated across the cities, will that impact on the fees that will have to be charged to citizens?
I am not looking right now as to where we are, that we will have to increase the fees for the citizens going forward.
Any other questions? All right. Ready for the question on item 17-202C? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no.
We didn't get a motion. We didn't get a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you for catching that. All right, ready for the question? All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries 6-1. This brings us to item 17-202D. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase monthly stormwater utility fees as authorized by Section 31.2-26 of said code.
Okay. In order for us to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and it's duly seconded, and that's to adopt the ordinance? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by voting yes. Those opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Which brings us to item 17-202F? E? E? E. I need to squint my eyes. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 7- An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 7-135 to eliminate permit rate language, which is duplicative of Appendix A of the Code.
You've heard the reading of the caption of the ordinance. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Which now brings us to item 17-202F. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to increase or modify application inspection and permit fees authorized by Chapter 7, Building and Building Regulations 32 Streets, Sidewalks, and Local Improvements, 39 Wetlands Board, and 40.1 zoning ordinance of said code.
Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard the caption of the ordinance read, read. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, it's duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. Which brings us to item 17-202G. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 33.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 33.1-55 regarding street name changes, and to amend Appendix A of the Code to increase or establish subdivision and other application and review fees as authorized by Section 33.1-20, and amended Section 33.1-55, and to correct certain section references.
Thank you. In order for this to get before us, is there a motion to adopt? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and it's duly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? We'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, item 17-202 passes unanimously?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 17-202H. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Section 32-285 of Chapter 32 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and Appendix A of the Code to establish fees for food truck permit applications.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries, which brings us to item 17-202I. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to increase or modify fees for certain services provided by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services as authorized by Sections 13-35 and 13-74 of the Code.
Thank you, ma'am. In order to get this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion, it's duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no.
One second, one second, one second. Okay, now everybody.
All right, let's revote. All in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries 7-0.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to 17-202J. And Madam Clerk, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance adopting the FY 2018 Classification and Pay Plan for employees of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia.
And to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
And it's been moved and duly seconded, and we do have one registered speaker, and that is Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. Sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. The pay and classification plan has some problematic aspects to it, and probably not ones that you would consider problematic if you're thinking within the confines of past practice. But to me, the failure to include school employees in the pay and classification plan is not going to work well in terms of a collaborative effort between the city council and the school board to improve the schools. Now, what muddies the waters somewhat is that the Commonwealth, which provides a sizable share of school funding, has a funny way of doling out their part. The General Assembly voted to give salary increases to the professional or the standards of quality employees in the schools, but it doesn't start until February of next year. And their increase does not touch the people who are in the trenches in the schools, the people who work in the cafeterias, the people who perform maintenance, the people who do the admin jobs, the people who drive the buses and assist the bus drivers. They're not mentioned in the General Assembly's increase. And so if the locality doesn't make those funds available, then they go without. And to me, as somebody who has worked in the school setting, every person in a school is part of the figurative village. Every person is in a supportive role for the educational endeavor. So nobody should be left out. We used to have an act that was called No Child Left Behind. Well, no school employee should be left behind. The fact that you haven't thought comprehensively, that you haven't looked at the big picture, because these after all are the Portsmouth public schools, says that this item is not ready for prime time. I would like you to defer action on this and go back and work harder to come up with a collaborative funding mechanism that addresses the gap between July 1st and February for the SOQ employees, and addresses an increase for those members of the school staff who are not going to get anything from the General Assembly. And this should be institutionalized. This should be part of your best practice. Because again, if, as you stated at your retreat, upping the performance of the schools is important to you, then you should be thinking holistically. The mayor gave a stirring historical, geographical address in his state of the city about all the great things in Portsmouth. But unfortunately, our participation in those great things is limited. We don't have as many shipyard employees from Portsmouth as our proximity would indicate we should. The same thing with the Naval Medical Center. And rather than importing people from elsewhere to work there, we should be grooming our young people so that they can step into those jobs and stay at home. So I ask you to revisit this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to make a comment because I generally admire and I am interested in what Mr. Godolgi-Yatroski has to say, because he's always well thought out and has his facts together. But for the edification of the public, the Portsmouth City Council, nor is any city council in the Commonwealth of Virginia, allowed to maintain a classification and pay plan for a school system. We are not allowed to do that. We can write a check to the school system, and we can hope and pray and cross our pinky swear that they're going to use it for pay. But we don't control pay plans for the school system in Portsmouth, nor does any other city or county in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So I just don't want the public to think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to be voting no, and I just want to say that this is not reflective at all on the efforts of the citizens, but I believe the issue that this raises is a deeper issue of equity, and that is if you're going to treat one side of the House one way, that is the city employees and our school employees differently, there becomes an equity issue. And I think with the tremendous voices that we have heard over this budget season in regards to the pay that all of the school employees should be receiving, I can't in good conscience vote yes on this, so I would be voting no.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 6-1. Which brings us to item 17-202K. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving the Community Planning and Development 2018 Annual Action Plan of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, and authorizing the city manager to file documents required to obtain the city's community planning and development grant entitlements.
Thank you, ma'am. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Is there? We do have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion? Vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this motion passes 7-0.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 17-202L. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please? Okay, Dr. Patton.
... in Texas since we've been up here in regard to two severe accidents. One is in the Craddock area, and one is off Frederick Boulevard, south of 264. We have right now almost 4,000 citizens without lights. Virginia Power is involved, but they're saying it's estimated that lights may not be back on in those neighborhoods until maybe 2:00 a.m. And in the Frederick area, it will be anywhere from 10:00 to 2:00 a.m. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just want the public to know that.
And do keep us posted on that. Now, we're coming back to item 17-202L. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Did you read the caption? Oh, wow. Carry it away. Will you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance approving the fiscal year 2018 operating budget for the Portsmouth public school system in the amount of $182,985,789, and appropriating the necessary funds by classifications to implement, one, the grant fund category of said budget for the entire fiscal year 2018, and two, the remainder of said budget for the first quarter of fiscal year 2018.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, just want to make sure, I think the incorrect figure was read. I thought she said 182 million.
Okay, everybody on board? We do have a motion and it's been duly seconded, and we do have one speaker, Mark Godolgi-Yatroski. And sir, you've got five minutes. And please be germane to the issue before us.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. You don't often get a second bite of an apple here, but I want to clarify my earlier statement about pay for school employees. I did not want to leave the impression that I was expecting council to include in its pay and classification plan the employees of the school system, but rather to include in its appropriations an equivalent appropriation for salaries for school employees. And this budget that is the subject of this particular piece of the proceeding does not do that. And I appreciate Councilmember Whitaker clarifying that on my behalf. So going forward with this particular item, I would like to see you amend the school appropriation to provide that parity for the reasons that I've previously stated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. There are no other registered speakers, and the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I've offered a couple alternatives to try to get the extra million dollars for the raises for the teachers in the school system. So at this time, agreeing with Mr. Godolgi-Yatroski, I'd like to offer an amendment to increase the city funds to the school from $52,400,000 to $53,400,000, making the total revenues of $193,985,789. And that would allow the school system to provide the raises for the teachers and the school employees.
And that is in the form of a motion to amend the ordinance that we currently have under consideration. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
To amend? Okay. We do have a motion to amend the ordinance, and would you, again, tell us the differential of the amount of the increase?
$1 million to bring the city funding from $52,400,000 to $53,400,000, making the total appropriation to the schools $193,985,789.
Thank you, sir. Does everybody on council understand the nature of the amendment? The amendment is to increase the local funding by a million dollars. Now, the Chair will entertain discussion on the amended, on the amendment. And the process will be, we'll vote on the amendment, and if it passes or fails, we'll go from there. So is there any discussion on the amendment, Dr. Whitaker? No, sir. Excuse me. Councilman Moody was first.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One, where's the additional funds coming from? And two, this is on the eve of adopting the budget. First, we've heard from it. We had an opportunity to discuss any change had an opportunity to discuss any changes tonight at the public work session. Didn't hear about that idea. And I'm extremely leery about pulling a million dollars out of the hat at the 11th hour. So the money has to come from somewhere. So I'm concerned with that.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to take the order in which people have asked for the floor. And so the Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Councilman Cherry shared this motion with me in the earlier session, asking that I would second it. And I told him I would not do that because I was not interested in doing something that I know was not going to pass or substantive. And I didn't want to put out something that gave the appearance that council was supporting this because, as Mr. Moody just mentioned, it had not been discussed. The million dollars, I'm not sure if that will provide the necessary funds that the schools requested. And also, I think that it is a sad commentary on our part that we would minimally look to fund the requests of the schools because we do know that this request of the million is as a result of this council deciding to give level funding. And at our last discussion, you had informed the school board, Mr. Rowe, that those funds were to come from the risk management. And so I'm not clear exactly how this is being funded, how this is being presented, just for maybe political purposes. But I do know that our superintendent, I see our superintendent here, and I see our Chair of the school board here, I would like to hear from them on this proposal that has just been presented tonight, if that is the consensus of council, to give them the opportunity to respond to this proposal.
Thank you, sir. The next
I just raised the issue of consensus of council to ask our superintendent to come and respond, or his staff to respond to this proposal.
Duly noted, sir. And we'll go to the next council member that has asked for the floor. We'll come back to your point. Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many of you, my councilmembers, know, being a new member on the council, this budget process has given me lots of headache and stress and trying to please so many hands. But looking at the budget and being liaison to the school board, I sat in some of those meetings with our Chair and our superintendent and other members of the school board. And their request was for an additional $1,079,000 to help assist with the 2% raises for all school staff. And it was my conversation, our discussion, that I would take it back to the council to see what we could do to try to bring that to the table. And that was my hope, that it would be there, because I do view these teachers in our school system as valued as we value our city employees, as we value our public safety officials as well. So that was my reasoning for second the motion today. And if it doesn't go forth, then I have made my earnest deal, promise to the school board that they will be included in the race.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Simmons.
Yes, sir. I think Councilman Moody asked a question, and I'm going to reiterate again, where is this coming from? We would have an unbalanced budget, as best I can tell. Or it's going to come out of fund balance, which is one-time money, which is not a good idea.
Thank you, ma'am. And the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Yeah, if you recall in our previous discussion, you know, I talked about the increase in operation budgets. All our constituents also have increases in operating budgets. We have a position called audit that we are not going to fill. When you're talking about $600 million, a million dollars is not a lot of money to find. All the proposals I put forth in the earlier discussion didn't go forward because, quite frankly, they didn't have four people to consent to them. So the managing team didn't go back and research, trying to do, trying to make them happen. But it is not, it would not be a tough, a tough find to find a million dollars in a $600 million budget. And if we had, and if we had to take a million dollars out of fund balance to make it happen this year, to figure it out after that, it wouldn't bother me at all. There were significant savings in the vacancies that Dr. Whitaker had asked about, and the answer he got was that they were already being used. But we haven't announced a hiring pause, or hiring freeze, or eliminating positions, so you can't do both. So between those places, we have the money, and we could do it.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, thank you. The statement that Mr. Cherry just made, that just confirms what I've been saying the whole time, that we have the money to fund the schools. It's just an issue of, are we going to do it? This last-minute approach of the million, the school system does not know at this point how that will be sustained. Is that a one-time payment for salaries that will be reoccurring? That's not even fiscally sound. So I'm not clear at this point, and I'm not trying to do anything to make a political show, knowing that this is going to be probably voted down, and not knowing the source of the funding. And as I said before, I would like to hear from the superintendent on this issue.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion before we take up the matter? We have an amendment to the ordinance that has been duly seconded, and that is on the table. Typically, you only have one item on the table at a time. To address Dr. Whitaker's request would require a vote by council to suspend the rules because we're hearing from a person who has not signed up. And so the Chair is going to rule. The Chair will entertain a motion to hear from the school superintendent and the Chairman of the school board, in the interest of making sure that all who are interested have a chance to be heard. Is there such a motion?
I move that we allow the, suspend the rule and allow the superintendent of schools, the Chair of the school board, or whoever so designated, to speak on the issue of school funding that has just been presented.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules, to allow the, and this is a narrow motion, either the Chairman of the school board or the superintendent or one of the people designated by them to speak on the school budget. Is that correct? All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries 7-0. And so the Chair will now recognize the Chairman of the school board, Claude Parent. And sir, you have five minutes. Are you present? And we'll just have one speaker at a time, please.
Dr. Bracy.
Okay. Dr. Bracy, you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. At this point, am I coming to address a specific question that was raised?
The question raised was by Dr. Whitaker to get your assessment of the amendment to the ordinance. The amendment is to increase the local funding by $1 million. And so we're asking you for your assessment on the impact of that amendment.
Okay. The increase of the $1 million to the school fund, overall fund, if that $1 million is granted, it would give us the flexibility to give the 2% increase to all employees. I guess my concern is, is going forward, is this part of the, is this part of the level funding format, or is this one-time funds? So that's what I would need to know. And if you're asking me, because if we're talking about one-time funds, then I can't say that we will be able to sustain that.
Hold on. Madam Clerk, will you suspend this time, and the Chair will recognize Vice Mayor Cherry?
The intent, Dr. Bracy, is for this to be reoccurring funds, that your appropriation would increase from 52 to 53 million. And it will be up to council to provide that. That's not something you should be concerned about. You shouldn't have to worry about where the million comes from. That's for us to do. But the intent of the motion was to make it permanent funding.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cherry. That being the case, then, yes, that would satisfy our needs to give the 2% increase to all employees.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right. We are now back on track. We have an amendment to the motion. The motion, the original motion, was to adopt the ordinance. The amendment amends the ordinance to increase the local funding by $1 million. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my colleague mentioned it earlier, that that's going to put us in the position of adopting an unbalanced budget if we do this. So, as you know, we can't adopt an unbalanced budget. So my question is, to the city manager and the finance director, where are we going to pull the million dollars from?
Madam City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Over the past months, we have been sharing, we were requested by school system through its superintendent, at our meetings, which were the last meetings that we had, where the liaisons were there, that the amount that was needed for, across the board, was $1,079. We presented to members of council where and how we could provide that funding in this budget. We also presented how we could sustain the monies that would be required to fund the $1,079. And we received validation from the state that the $497,000 that would have been the half a year, starting in February 5th, that in the upcoming year of the next budget that we would be preparing, that would cover a whole year. So we carefully calculated, tirelessly presented, and showed where we could assess the million dollars that was requested by the council, by the school board. And it was through combining and having a joint risk management fund.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Patton, for that explanation, because, as we know, and I appreciate what Mr. Cherry is attempting to do, but he cannot speak for the entire council. The information that we were left with at our last discussion is that this $1 million will have to be generated, just as Dr. Patton, you just stated, through the risk management, which we already know that the school board is opposed to that type of funding because it uses a one-time source to fund a recurring expense. They're not going to touch the OPEB fund. And so that's why I'm concerned. Where are we on this? The question is legitimate. Where is the funding coming from? And we can't, we can't get here now at the last minute for political purposes and try to play our school system like we're doing. We had several weeks to come up with this solution, and we didn't do it. We didn't listen to the school board's request. We ignored the needs of the children. And now we're coming here presenting fiscally unsound recommendations, and something that we don't even know will be sustained because council hasn't acted on this. And so I think it's just bad politics for us to be trying to play the school system and funding here at the last minute for political gain.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes, oops, you went on the floor, Vice Mayor Cherry.
Dr. Patton, you said it was $478,000 going forward?
No, I said that the $497,000 was the amount of which the state proposed to fund for the six months or the half a year. And in the next budget cycle, which would be as we prepare for the '19 budget, that would cover an entire year, which would be a million something dollars that was in the handout of which we shared, of going forward, the amount that the schools already put in their risk management fund is $200,000. Our amount would be the 260,
I got you.
Which would make the $1,079 or the million whatever there with no problems at all.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Right. Once again, that sounds good. At our last meeting, it was requested that if this is a certainty, then put it in writing. Put a memorandum of understanding together. And, Dr. Patton, you did not agree to do that, even though you were certain about this funding. If we're certain, then put it in writing. And therefore, we have some type of substance to it, instead of all of this rhetoric that we're hearing here at the last minute. I think it's totally disgraceful and unfair for us to come here tonight with such a proposal that we don't even know ourselves how it would be funded. And it's contrary to what the school board has requested.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Mayor, I was going to call for the question.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? The motion is to adopt an amendment to amend the ordinance as originally read, to increase the local funding to the schools by $1 million. Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion fails. Now, do what? Now, we now have the original motion, which is the adoption of the ordinance as originally read by our clerk. Well, we have a motion on that already. That motion's on the floor. Any further discussion of this motion? The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Mayor, I just wanted to make a note. I'm going to be voting against this, not because I don't want it to be funded, but because I still think a million dollars is not a hard find in a $600 million budget, and we can do that. And as I stated before in those numbers I gave, if we leveled funded those other things, we'd have a million dollars. So.
Thank you, sir. And the Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm going to be voting no. Million dollars is not a hard find, nor is the request that the school made of the 5.4, considering the vacancies that we have. I'm going to be voting no also because this budget is, this adoption of 190 I'm going to be voting no also because this budget is, this, this adoption of 192 million is irresponsible, and I think is reprehensible. It's irresponsible because it fails to meet the minimal needs that the school board requested. And I believe it's reprehensible because we are denying our school district the opportunity to advance. And also, we're failing our children. I believe when many of you campaigned this last season, you said that there would be a laser focus on education. I don't think the citizens realize you meant laser surgery. And you are cutting this budget in essence by giving level funding. However, with this laser surgery that you're doing, it's going to scar our children. And as one who sits on a college campus, and I see the critical thinking skills that are coming out of our public schools all across the country, for us to not fund education, I think it is a disgrace and a sad commentary on the part of this city, considering its makeup, that in a few more weeks, we're going to be celebrating the May 17, 1954 Brown versus Board of Education decision. And, and for us to be still dealing with issues of equity and funding here in 2017 is, is a disgrace. And I'm voting no against this. I think our schools deserve better. I think our children deserve the best. And I think the mark of any civilized society is how we treat our children.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Yes, I, I would like to state for the record, I will be voting no as well as a liaison to the school board. I do want to see more of a partnership with the, the city council and the school board. I would hope that we would find some kind of way to fund the 2% for our teachers, as we have done with our public safety, fire, and police, and with our city employees. And I would like to applaud our city manager and her staff. They have done an incredible job working on this budget and have given us all of the information that we've needed to be educated with it. But I would still like to see the teachers be treated fairly in this as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. The motion is to adopt the ordinance. If you're in favor of that, please vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
This brings us to item 17-202M. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance approving the FY 2018 through '22 capital improvement program and appropriating $43,378,713 in the FY 2018 capital improvement fund and $6,104,000 in the FY 2018 public utilities capital improvement fund.
Thank you, ma'am. In order for us to consider this, is there a motion to adopt?
Ten minutes.
We have a motion, and it's been duly seconded. And we're ready for discussion. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes. Dr. Patton, just want some clarity. On the capital improvement, does this include any funding? I, I think I asked this question previously. Does this include any funding for the development of waterfront with the courthouse and the jail? Does this capital improvement plan take into account any of those type of considerations as we look towards economic development?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm going to wait a minute. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, this capital improvement plan does not have any item which addresses the jail or the waterfront. It does have in it the item which addresses the New Portside.
I, I think that, I think that's very short-sighted, considering the major economic development. And for us to be even looking at the portside issue and the funding, which not clear where those funds are coming from as well, and we're still trying to balance education, I, I think that that's, that's a short-sighted capital improvement plan.
Dr. Patton.
The, the, the funds for Portside are in the capital improvement plan, not in the general fund.
I meant the source of, the source of those funds in the capital improvement plan. Where, where are they coming from for Portside? Is that a grant? Is that taxpayer money?
We have applied for a grant. As I indicated, we applied for $750,000 through a port grant. The decision will not be made in regard to that funding until the end of May 1st of June.
So, if that grant is not approved, then there would be no Portside?
No. It is in this capital improvement budget, and we have also applied for the grant.
Okay. How much of it, how much of it will be taxpayer money versus plus the grant?
The grant is 750,000 if we get it. If we don't get the grant, then the 750,000 that's in the CIP will be the money that will be used.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready for the motion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. Hold on. We do have a registered speaker. Can we clear the board? And the Chair will... Thank you for your patience. Thank you, sir. Thank you for reminding me.
Yes, sir.
And you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I rise to speak specifically about the Portside aspect of the capital improvement budget. In researching the grants that the Virginia Port Authority offers to local ports, I find it hard to believe that anybody with an understanding of, of what the stipulations are would approve any funding for this. In their administration section of the guidance, item number two states, "Funds will be used to support capital needs of publicly owned ocean, river, and tributary ports and their marine facilities within the Commonwealth, whose primary purpose is the flow-through of goods for consumption." I do not see how this project meets that stipulation. Of course, I'm not a lawyer, and they did approve funding for a fishing pier. I'm, I don't know how a fishing pier qualifies as a port, nor a flow-through of goods for consumption unless the fish are the goods in, in question. But putting together a block party on the waterfront is a very atypical port activity. And the goods for consumption flowing through, well, there will be some flow, I'm sure. This kind of flow, no doubt. But I don't think that really is within the sense of what they're trying to stimulate. As I wrote to you all, and as I posted on portsmouthcitywatch.org, you know, council is constantly focused elsewhere when it comes to funding. This is an extravagance, considering the things that we are not funding. I don't believe it should be the first order of business, nor the second order. And so, I am unequivocally opposed to funding a portside development out of our capital improvement funds. I think that what the city has done on the North Landing site over the past few years really is the highest and best use as a public space approach. You have movable events. You have a series of events that attract people to the waterfront and allow us to highlight what we do best. You could do a much better job of promoting the Chesapeake Bay Classic. We are the terminus of that event. And so, those types of informal events that attract people to the waterfront and show what a scenic city we are, and what a welcoming city we can be, would appear to me the best use. Now, I made a misstatement. I stated that that property is in a flood zone, and I rechecked my facts on that. It does not qualify as a flood zone. It is adjacent to two flood zones, but in and of itself, it is not. However, in a category-two hurricane, which I haven't seen in my 20-plus years here in Portsmouth, it would be underwater, according to the hurricane maps. We came close, and what with the change in global climate, it's not unlikely that we could be facing a hurricane of category-two proportions in the not-too-distant future. But I won't forecast that. I'm just saying, prevention is usually more effective and cheaper than cure. So, I would not erect a permanent structure on that site, but continue to use the temporary structures to support the kinds of events that we have been supporting over the last several years. Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The Portside, bringing back Portside was something that council, I think, was unanimous in wanting to do at our past retreat. Those of us who remember Portside, remember the crowds that it drew and the camaraderie among all aspects of our citizens who came to Portside. So, I think the merchants recall Portside bringing patrons into their establishments. So, I think it was an economic plus for the city. I think, you know, we're a city on the waterfront. In fact, we've had conversations about, we need a signature event, or events throughout the summer that bring people down to the waterfront. The Portside location has been effective in the past. I think we can improve upon the product. And I think the citizens of this city, I've heard overwhelmingly that they would like to see another Portside-like facility there. You know, everyone has an opinion. Some oppose the Renaissance. In fact, I think the previous speaker did, as he did in Telos, and as he did most of the waterfront development. I'm glad we don't have those rotting piers still downtown. It was mentioned earlier about the civic, former civic center and the jail. I think to do that won't necessarily be a figure in our capital improvement budget, but I think it'll be through an agreement with the master developer in, in a partnership to market our waterfront. There's still a lot of potential there. And I think Portside can play a part in that by, once again, getting people over to Portsmouth, looking at what we have, meeting our citizens, networking. I know a lot, a lot of people, that's how they get jobs. That's how they discover new areas in the region. And by golly, with the tunnel tolls being an obstacle, I think Portside can remove some of that obstacle and get people, once again, coming over and enjoy Portsmouth waterfront. So, I take exception. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion to adopt, vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, it's not registered.
You've already voted.
Well, we, we entertain the speaker. Seven oh is the vote. Six one?
Six one.
Yeah, the motion carries. Thanks. Which brings us to item 17-202N. Madam Clerk, would you read the resolution?
Yes, sir.
The ordinance, I mean.
An ordinance to appropriate $431,386,588 for the operation of city government during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017.
Thank you. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? Oh, we do have a speaker. On N, and that's Mr. Mark Godoghy Yotroski, and you have five minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. In this ordinance, I have one item to which I object, and that is the, as, as previously mentioned, that is the supplement for members of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. As previously stated, this city went into debt, in part, to erase the social security offset that was part of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System plan. And they granted to the people who were affected by that offset an enormous bonus at the time that they erased the offset. There is no need for us to annually provide them an additional supplement. We're talking about thousands of dollars a year, in most cases, that people are receiving that they would not otherwise receive. It's interesting. You know, there, there are people in the closed retirement plans, and there are people who worked for this city also, who are covered by the Virginia Retirement System. How come we never are voting supplements to the retirees in the Virginia Retirement System? They were employees of this city. They were provided for by deductions from their paychecks. Everybody who has come in after the system has closed, after the, the original system's closed, has been in the Virginia Retirement System. But they don't march up to this podium asking for a handout. Why is that? What's different in the two plans? How does VRS provide them supplements if it does? That would be good information to have. But that notwithstanding, there should be a policy that the supplement to retirees in the Portsmouth closed systems should track the rate of increase set by the social security system for its recipients. Social Security is the largest retirement system in the United States. And they index their payments based on economic indicators, one of them being the Consumer Price Index. So, I believe that the city should not be issuing a supplement to members of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And we do have one more speaker on this ordinance. Garland Alexander, and sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, council members, and city manager, Dr. Patton. My name is Garland Alexander. My name is Garland Alexander. I live at 2913 Tanbark Lane. The committee and I have tried several different options to get additional funds for retirees that have been retired for a number of years. They've worked for the city of Portsmouth for 25, 30, and 35 years. Many of those widows are receiving as little as $10,000 a year. Are faced with having to make a choice whether to choose to buy food or medicine. Dr. Patton has stated that she would not, was not willing to recommend one half of general wage employees' raise for retirees. We are asking for additional $500 for each retiree with 20 years or more in service with the city. We expect the mayor and the city council to act on this as soon as the numbers come back from John Hancock, as far as how many was more than 20 years. We are counting on these numbers be available by the next work session. Thank you, and I would ask everyone that agrees with my comments to please stand. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Alexander, the city manager, and certainly the mayor and council, I think, were in agreement that, you know, we'll get those numbers, and the city manager said that we will have those numbers shortly, so we'll be able to look at them and see what we can do. Thank you again for bringing this to our attention.
That's all of our registered speakers. The motion now is up for our discussion. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is to adopt the ordinance as read by the city clerk, seventeen-two-oh-two N. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, vote yes, opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries, six-one.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item seventeen dash two-oh-two O. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution declaring that the full-time paramedic positions of the Emergency Medical Services Division of the Portsmouth Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services are an integral part of the official safety program of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, within the meaning of the Virginia Line of Duty Act.
Thank you, ma'am. In order to get this before us, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Sir, move.
Sir, a second. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we do have one registered speaker, Kurt Dietrich. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Kurt Dietrich, and I'm the president of the Portsmouth Professional Firefighters and Paramedics IFF Local 539. I represent over 250 of the active and retired members of the Portsmouth Fire Department. We're here tonight to support this resolution, and I'd like to ask all those here in attendance tonight, all of our firefighters, paramedics, and retired firefighters, to please stand if you support this resolution. Thank you. As you know, the paramedics are a vital part of our city's emergency preparedness plan. They're on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. They respond to emergency calls, accidents, trauma calls, and structured fire calls. They're exposed to the same environment that the sworn firefighters are exposed to. They operate on vehicle accident calls on the highways, side by side with firefighters to provide the best level of patient care that's possible. And when they respond to structured fires, they're exposed to the same toxins and carcinogens that our firefighters are exposed to. So, it's only fitting that they should be offered the same protection under the Virginia Line of Duty Act that the other public safety employees are given. If you were unaware, April 26 of 2017, the Portsmouth Fire Department received the American Heart Association's Mission Lifeline EMS Recognition Gold Award. That's the fourth consecutive year that they've received that award, and that recognizes the department's dedication and commitment to implementing quality care to patients on EMS calls. So, we look forward to the city council's support on this. It's been a long, long fight for the paramedics to get this done, so we look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take a minute to recognize Councilman Clark. He's been on this council now five months, and it is he that brought this to our attention. I would tell you that it's probably a sin of omission instead of commission, particularly at this day and time. We know our paramedics are subject to the same life-threatening conditions that our police and firefighters are, and just as likely to be involved in some craziness on the street as the others. And so, I just wanted to give Councilman Clark an attaboy for bringing this to us. It's pretty good work for five months on the job, Nick.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes, opposed, no. And the motion carries seven-oh. Please, please, please. Which brings us to new business. Seventeen dash two-thousand, seventeen dash two-oh-three Boards and Commissions, Vice Mayor Cherry.
Mayor, we have no nominations for tonight.
Seventeen dash two-oh-four, items submitted by council members, Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer my port report to you, but I do have a couple of items of interest for the general public. I'm not going to talk tonight about the Memorial Day Parade or the Imoja Festival because we will meet again before they happen, but know that they are all on Memorial Day weekend. Tomorrow, which would be Wednesday morning at 7:00 a.m., if you are so inclined, I would encourage you to come out and support the Police Unity Tour send-off. As we sit here tonight, there are over 100 police officers from all over the South who are staying in Portsmouth tonight because they choose to come here for their send-off for their bicycle ride from here to Washington, D.C., to the Police Memorial in Washington, D.C. They will leave port side tomorrow morning at 10:700, very early, with, of course, a wonderful contingent of our police officers and state troopers to guide them from here all the way to Washington, D.C. They will leave port side and go around Crawford Parkway, take a left on Effingham, take a right on London Boulevard, and then take a right on High Street and go out Route 17, I think, as far as the James River Bridge. So, if you want to follow them from where you live, plan accordingly. It's an awesome sight to watch and to see. I've had the privilege of seeing a lot of these officers the last couple of days here, and they've come here year after year after year, from Florida, from South Carolina, from all over the South, and it's a wonderful event. This is National Police Memorial Awareness Week. We just today, in the city of Portsmouth, had our memorial ceremony for our 15 fallen men and women in our police and sheriff's department, going back as far as 1871. We have 15 on our list. We hope we never get to 16. On a more pleasant note, on Saturday, May 20, we will have a coffee talk with the city council. You used to coffee talk with a cop? Well, we're going to have coffee talk with the city council in a casual setting at the Bataway Golf Course Pavilion. That's a Saturday morning, 9:00 to 11:00, May 20. And backing up to this coming weekend, in years past, the Gosport Arts Festival has taken place in the downtown area, and the Gosport Arts folks, who have put on their art show for more than 20 years to benefit Edmark Hospice for Children, determined this year they were not able to produce a show. We hope they'll come back, but this was their decision about their management, not about Portsmouth. So, and since we are accustomed to having lots of folks come to the city for arts, the Old Town Business Association and our merchants have come together and are going to produce an event on Saturday on High Street called For Arts, and there will be book authors, there will be music, there will be paintings, there will be a little bit of everything in the arts you can imagine, in the first several blocks of High Street, from 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. So, you can look at Ports Events website to get those details. And then on Sunday, just because it's fun, and this tells my age, on Sunday, May 14, which of course is Mother's Day, we have a pretty cool ticketed concert at the Portsmouth Pavilion, which is The Temptations and The Four Tops on Sunday night. So, I hope everyone will enjoy all the festivities.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, any other members of council? Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any events, but something will be taking place that those of us who live in different areas of the city will appreciate, and that's the commencement of our mosquito spraying program. And I'd like to thank the city manager and her staff getting the plan organized. I understand it's getting ready to kick off very shortly. I didn't bring the schedule with me, but I think it will be posted online, but will be happening shortly. The little critters that I've been running into in the past week tell me it's about time. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other member of council? Well, Councilwoman Simmons said I would give the port report, and my report is this. We had two important visitors to our city yesterday. One is our governor, and the other is the Costco Development, and that's the reason the governor was in town. The Costco Development is the largest container ship that's ever called on the East Coast, 1,200 feet long. It's as long as the fourth tallest skyscraper in New York, carries 13,092 containers. If you put all those containers end-to-end and stretch them from Portsmouth West, the last container would be at Emporia. So, think about riding for an hour and 15 minutes, looking over your right shoulder at nothing but containers for an hour and 15 minutes. It's a huge ship. And so, this is the first of many ships in the future that will call on the East Coast, but its first port call was to Hampton Roads, but most importantly, to Portsmouth, the gateway to the heartland of America. And to recognize this historic event, the governor gave us, the city, this plaque, which memorializes this very historic event, the Costco Development. And I'll keep it up here if you want to come by and see the plaque. And this was a big deal, such a big deal that the Costco Company is a Chinese company, and they had their executive vice president here yesterday in Portsmouth, not in Chesapeake, not in Virginia Beach, not in Offutt, but in Portsmouth. And so, I think that we have a chance to claim a first, the first-ever large container ship of the size that can carry 13,000 calling on the East Coast came to our city first. Thank you. This brings us to item seventeen dash two-zero-five, Report on Pending Items. Madam City Manager, do you have any? Do you have any update on the outage?
Oh, yes, I do have an update on the outage.
Your mic, please.
Justin Arnold, who's in the audience, just sent a text to let it be known that power has been restored to Craddock and surrounding areas, and the occupants in the vehicles that crashed were treated for minor injuries.
Good. Thank you. This brings us to our last item, item seventeen-two-oh-six, Non-Agended Speakers, and we have four. The first speaker is Joe Maudlin, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, administration, fellow citizens. My name is Joseph Meglin, and I represent the Hampton Roads Pride Organization. For those who aren't familiar with us, the Hampton Roads Pride is an all-volunteer, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization. Our mission is to promote pride and knowledge of the richness and diversity of our community through the organization and promotion of annual regional pride events. I do have two topics of interest to discuss this evening. First of all, Hampton Roads Pride would like to acknowledge and applaud the establishment of an LGBT liaison officer in the Portsmouth Police Department. The establishment of this position is significant in that it will enhance the spirit of diversity, inclusion, and equality within the police department and the community at large. Our thank you to the city of Portsmouth and the police chief of Portsmouth for this significant event. Secondly, and I provided some general information to you, the Hampton Roads Pride would like to extend an invitation to members of city council and city administration to be our guests at what will hopefully be the first annual rainbow art show to be held at the Twisted Pig Ale and Smokehouse on Mount Vernon Avenue, Portsmouth. This event will be on Tuesday, the 6th of June, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. The art show will feature works by local and LGBT artists and is the launch event for the annual Hampton Roads Pride Fest series of events. We hope that the members of council will join us at this cultural celebration of this, excuse me, this event celebrating the Portsmouth spirit of diversity and equality. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. And our next speaker is Tim Goodrich. Sir, you've got five minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and distinguished guests that have come to visit, and, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dr. Patton, I forgot to acknowledge you as well. First, I'd like to thank the mayor for calling me second, so I don't stand between a fork and somebody's dinner. My name is Tim Goodrich. I'm the president and CEO of Timetrone Corporation. We're one of the newest companies, engineering firms, that have come to the city of Portsmouth. I wanted to take this evening, in this moment, to introduce myself and our firm. We major in four core areas of competency, information technology, which we have a lot of companies that do now, engineering, management consulting services, and research. Over time, you'll get to know our company for what we do and what we bring to the table. We're a defense contractor. We focus on telecom communications and engineering for DESA and DOD. I'm also a retired Army officer in United States Military Intelligence. Hoorah for anybody who's joined the Army, because I know I'm surrounded by Navy, but that's okay. It's all love. But I wanted to make sure I introduced myself, make sure I gave you some marketing material. It serves two purposes. One, it informs you of our company and what we do, but it also serves as a fan because of the card stock, just in case it gets too hot in here, which I already see Councilwoman Simmons had already started using. So, that was my quick introduction, such that I wanted to give more time where time is needed. On the second matter, I wanted to also introduce one of the things that we're doing again, which is for the abstinence education program with Portsmouth Health Department. This is the Portsmouth, excuse me, this is the summer camp that we do each year. This is our second time in doing it. The first one went off very well, and was very well-received, in which Virginia Department of Health came down and visited themselves with the director, and Dr. Chang had already given his blessing to where we're running the second one. The letter I give you on the front is requesting the city of Portsmouth support, however you like to define support. To me, it's giving the opportunity to the children that don't have opportunities to move outside of their community, and since it's Portsmouth intercity youth, I think there is a firm understanding and definition of what that means. I'd like the city council to take that to heart and understand that we are investing time as well as resources to make sure that there are opportunities aboard, including working with NATO, we're working with Joint Forces Command, we're working with the United States Coast Guard, and we'd like the city, since this is for the city, to be included in that aspect as well. I am not here to ask for financial support. I'm only asking for the defined measure of support, whether that's through STEM or through your presence and coming to say hello to the kids, such that it gives them an understanding of the city cares. That is my time. I'd like to leave it open in case you have any questions for me.
Thank you, sir. And before the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry, there are two Army guys up here. Vice Mayor Cherry and myself. Hoorah.
Hoorah, thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Cherry. Vice Mayor Cherry.
Well, the mayor said part of what I was going to say. Question, how long you been in Portsmouth?
Our company has been in Portsmouth as of, we're going on a year and a half now.
Okay, yeah. Welcome to Portsmouth, as you said, there are two former Army officers here, and Mr. Moody was a member of the Army Air Corps, better known as the Air Force now. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you. And if we can help you in any way, and you're, and welcome to Portsmouth, please do not hesitate to call either my office or Dr. Patton's.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Roderick Madison, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Dr. Patton. Just real quick, just came up here to address something that's very important, the usage of social media. We should be using social media as a positive platform to promote our city. Recently, I had the opportunity to run against Michael Moore in a simple Democratic caucus, and I lost favorably. He won favorably, but shortly thereafter, a council member, I don't do name-calling, put out that he was not a resident of Portsmouth. Fact-check. Do your fact-checks before you put something so erroneous out on Facebook. And then if you found to be wrong, be man or woman enough to stand up and say, hey, I was wrong. My facts were wrong. But it's a deterrent to our city when we constantly put out negative information about the city of Portsmouth. Let's put out some positive information. Use your platforms to highlight how great we are and what we can do as a city to come together to compete with these other cities. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler, and sir, you have five minutes.
Should I have the police chief to come up?
Yes, sir, you may. Chief Happen.
Chief Happen. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of Council, sign the arm, it's why you stay. The reason why I got my hat on, I take my hat off to the council and to the police chief and to the medical people. These are very important people. We had many arguments. A lot of people don't know, come over here close where they can see that you are a lady, and this is the police chief. And when he come to someone's house, see what uniform he got, so you know who he is. The reason why I'm doing this, because my next-door neighbor fell out of bed, him and his wife, they was on the scene, can't put him back in the bed. Lot of people don't know who these peoples are. So I hope tonight, by seeing us, they'll know. So I take my hat off to them, and thank you for the service that you do for Portsmouth. We appreciate that. Now, Mother's Day is coming up. Everybody here got a mother, because do you wouldn't be here. But anyway, you got a wife, don't be like the guy next-door neighbor to me, say he won't get his wife now because she won't honor his mother, but I think that's real un-gross. But anyway, make sure that you say something to somebody's mother, even if your mother's passed. Either if you are a mother and you're not a mother, have to say something to somebody. This is a great time to be nice. And I want to say to the, Dr. Patton, you and your team did a fantastic job with this budget. Now, I work with the budget with the Marine Corps. See, these people didn't stay up all night and have some coffee and go back at it like I did. But anyway, I know what you went through. I take my hat off to you. It's a lot to this budget. And when I see people abuse the budget people that did it, it makes me kind of sad, because look at it, they don't know anything about a budget, so don't worry about it. But at the end of the year, now if I'm wrong, correct me, the school bode all the money they don't use, they give it back to you, they had to give you half, right? Take that money all back, and then you can get all the employee raises and things, and you won't have to go back getting no million dollars and all that. Take the whole money back. Hey, that's my taxpayer money. I'm getting a little bit sick of the school bode abusing me and my taxes. Now, come on, let's face it. Let's stop putting this all time on the kids. Let's look at reality, and let's, we'll do the right thing toward the school, but stop always bringing up the kids, talking about we're hurting them, because I'm not going to feel bad about that. Because if my kids won't stop, and I know they ain't got the money, then they ain't going to get it, they'll wait. So I hate to be like this, but it's time we wake up, and we'll be in fair with the school bode, but I'm going to tell you, we on a countdown. It ain't going to be long. We on a countdown. Just hold your peace and everything, and this council is doing a great job. Now, I didn't bring this up, but I have to tell you, Dr. Patton, you're doing a great job. The city is clean. Don't you know I saw the street before I changed? I can't believe that. But it did come by, and he had never to the old home, I mean, because I came to the door and on the porch and looked at it, but anyway, that's great. But it's good that this council is doing what they should do, and I appreciate everything that you do, and a lot of people appreciate you. Because a lot of people in this city are kind to one another, they are speaking and saying how the city is coming along, and this is great, because we haven't had this in a long time. Come on, people, we can speak up and say it, don't be ashamed. We all in this city together, so let's do the thing together. But anyway, I didn't have time, Dr. Patton, but I'm going to give you this, a lot of these drainages need the grass cut out of them and the trash, but you're doing a good job all around the place. You and Sherwood Watson, he's doing a great job now. He done painted a couple of old people's sheds. Of course, I got one, I had to remodel mine, he couldn't do mine, it cost too much money. But anyway, he's doing a great job, and I'm looking forward to seeing Sherwood Watson back with us again. And I'm going to bring my envelope here that I made to seal on. You remember when I brought it up and sealed it up for who will be on council, who will lose, who will win? I'm going to bring it next time, let's sign it on, open it up, and see how far off I was, how good I was at doing that. But anyway, there's a lot of things in the city that need to be done. There's a lot of red lights out, not red lights, but the street lights out, from the floor shop all the way back to the cemetery, see, can't you get them back on? And on High Street, please come up there and put a mark of where I got to stop at for that red light that go up on the freeway, up there by the Moors, by, well, you know that church, Morning Star Church. When you come up there, there's nothing tell me how far to set back, nothing. So put a little marking up there, tell me how far to set up there, where I can turn. I like that, because I don't have to come downtown no more. But anyway, I want all the ladies in Portsmouth that's looking at TV tonight, and I hope many more, and everybody here, Happy Mother's Day and good night.
Thank you, sir. That's our last speaker, and I, Dr. Patton?
Mayor, members of city council, if I may, I would like to thank the members of the budget team and just ask them to stand, I'm going to identify them. Deputy City Manager LaVore Pace, Deputy City Manager Vincent Jones, CFO Ellis Kelly, Human Services Director Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden, Mrs. Rosalyn Oglesby, Assistant to the City Manager, Mr. Casey, our Budget Officer, Mrs. Washington, our Budget Officer, and Mrs. Karen Bento, who is also one of our budget administrators. In addition, the department heads who are here tonight, please stand. All of the department heads who are here tonight, please stand. It has taken a pure team approach ever since September, when we started working, and although the budget is being adopted tonight, we will start working on the 2019 budget tomorrow at 2:00 o'clock. We will have a meeting. So we take it very seriously, and we meet every two weeks going forward, starting with tomorrow. Thank you, members of council.
Thank you. And it's very appropriate to recognize them, and on behalf of council, we sincerely appreciate the hard work that you've done on this budget. There's no further business, and this meeting is now adjourned.